Okay, it is Tuesday, 27 June 2017, at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting of the Village of North Hudson to order. And I'll short indication, Father, give our leaders wisdom, forgive our nation from its sins, and grant your people courage and wisdom as we stand for your principles. Thank you very much. Roll call.
Trustee head, absent. Leaf?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustees Ice?
Here.
Zappa, absent.
Okay, item number three is comments from the floor. This gives an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And I think everybody I see out here is on tonight's agenda, so there's no surprises. We'll go on to item four. Oh, that's right, Chief, sorry about that. See, I was five minutes ago and I already forgot.
Easily forgettable.
Yeah. All right. Two points that I want to bring up to the board is, back on June 11th, we had the
large storm that rolled through as taking off my police chief hat and putting on my emergency management hat. I wanted to thank the residents for their patience. Public Works and the Police Department worked diligently on that Sunday during the day to clear roadways, to make sure that we kept people safe with the gas line leaks and the power lines down. I think it ran very smoothly. We had a lot of positive feedback from the residents. I thank the board for putting together the proclamation to pick up debris up until, I believe it was Wednesday of last week. It seemed like the debris cleanup went very quickly and smoothly. We are still working on the monies and reimbursement claim for the disaster relief fund through the state of Wisconsin, and so I'll let you know more about that as that comes together. Then my other point, we currently have a lane closure on Highway 35 southbound at Monroe Street North. It's the straight lane next to Seasons Tavern, so everybody is being diverted into the turn lane. It's causing some traffic issues. It wasn't going too badly until this afternoon when the lift bridge went up in Stillwater, and then there was a major power outage, and it has currently stuck up. The last I heard before I came to the meeting at 6:30 is that it may be into tomorrow, that it will be closed, so I asked people to, again, use patience, use caution. We did have officers, myself and the afternoon officer, were directing traffic for a period of time to try to keep things moving smoothly. We'll try to do that around the higher traffic volumes, but until that opens up again, there's probably going to be some congestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, item number four.
Stan, you want to number two?
What did I do?
We approved the minutes from?
All the minutes, yeah, all right. Because I was told at one time we didn't actually have to approve them, but is there any corrections or amendments to the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And thank you. I mean, it's fly through, there's a couple that I've been looking forward to. And item number four is one of them. If Colleen would join me up at the podium. Colleen has been, was with the village since 2006. She said she had enough of us come the, you know, at this last election and chose not to run. She's served under, I got my other notes here. Just to give rundown, because she's been very active with our crew. And she was appointed to the position in April of 2006, and at that same time she became the park board chair. She's been re-elected for five consecutive terms, 2007 to 2009, 2009 to '11, '11 to '13, '13 to '15, and '15 to '17, where, you know, she said, you know, she's got other things to do. So in appreciation, and then she was also public welfare chair from 2014 until she decided she had enough. That might have been why they had to put it up with Finance Committee, I'm not sure. But we would like to present her, first of all, from the League of Municipalities, they, in the state of Wisconsin, there's a group, you know, that the villages and towns have, and they give you a pin, and this is a 10-year pin, so I'd like to present Colleen with her 10-year pin from the League and appreciation. And we also have a timepiece that we bought for, you know, for, in recognition of 11 years of dedicated service from the, to the Village of North Hudson.
Oh, thank you.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything? Yeah, I put you on the spot.
It feels a little too weird being on this side of the microphone. Anyway, I enjoyed serving all these years with all the different presidents and different members, and with Chief Richard all these years, and Public Works and everyone, it's just been, it's been a great experience. It's not like I'm leaving the village, so you'll still see me around, and just, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Yeah, you've said enough meetings, I get that. Okay, the next one is, it's a sad one for a lot of us, but happy one because Gloria, our village administrator, and for many years now, has decided that she's had enough of us too. So before I go on, I would like to invite Larry Larson, who hired Gloria to come up and say a few words, and then we'll also, Larry was here from 2004 to 2009, and, you know, and that's when Gloria came on board. And then George Klein, another president that she put up with, you know, I mean, 2009 to '13, will be next, and then I'll kind of finish off. Larry?
Thank you. Thank you. Gloria had asked, when she saw me walk in, she said, "Am I going to be embarrassed tonight?" And all I could say is, "With a little bit of luck, yes." Now, as Stan mentioned, in that particular board that I was on, we started in 2003, shortly thereafter, we had a need to hire a new village administrator. And the one thing that we clearly all recognized was a critical need for the village was to add professional, formal accounting and finance background. We take an awful lot of that kind of for credit, or we take it for granted today, that, you know, how the system is set up and how all the accounting is done, that that's the way it's always been. But I can assure you, prior to 2003, that was not the case. So we had a number of really good applicants, some even had PhDs, and we selected Gloria. And I can say that having served on the board for six years, that was probably one of the best selections the village has ever made. The other one that we had is sitting to my right. Okay? And then the other one was Colleen, when she joined the board. So, but I know that there is plans for a replacement, and I can assure everyone that whoever follows Gloria will have some huge shoes to follow. She's been an indispensable asset to the village for the last six years. And on behalf of myself, all of the board members that I served with, George, and in the years when he did, thank you for your service. You were indispensable.
Thank you.
Again, I was asked if we were going to roast you tonight, Gloria, and that would be very inappropriate. Your task as an administrator, a treasurer, a clerk, I have to use the word indispensable, but I'll use another word or phrase. You made me look good. Stan would concur. Without you, we wouldn't have looked darn near as good as we did. So thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart. Gloria was involved in many projects, not the least of which happened to be the building that we're in right now. It was December 2007 when the board made a motion to renovate and expand this building. And then Mark Zappa made another motion, and I want George Klein to be the project manager. Thank you, Gloria, very much, for all your assistance. That whole area where the treasurer, the clerk, and the administrator work, that design is due in large measure to the work that Gloria put in, to making sure that it would function the way it does now. So those offices, just the whole arrangement, was due in part to Gloria. So thank you again for that. We went through a number of transitions, and every one, Gloria was at the lead, again, making us look good. So Gloria, thank you very much again, and enjoy retirement, if you can enjoy it even half as much as I've enjoyed mine. You'll have a great time with the grandchildren, as I am with my little granddaughter, even though she's now in France. But it's still fun to Facebook when the kids are far away. You'll love it, and you'll love that free time, and you'll love the memories. Thank you again.
Okay, as Larry and George have mentioned, you know, the different folks that have been, you know, Gloria's worked with and trained, you know, and she's, Chief Eichel was here for a short time when she started, and Chief Rickert has been here for the duration. Couple other facts that, you know, as George said, Gloria was part of the building management committee in order to get, you know, like George said, the office runs smooth, I mean, the way, you know, it's a team that is, we're blessed to have in the village. I mean, they've done unbelievable work in getting, you know, we were always budget challenged, and, and boy, now more than ever so. And it might be the reason she decided that she's had enough of this, I'm not really sure. But, you know, some of the other things that, and she's been working with the budget, she found unbelievable substantial ways to save the village money. I mean, I, you know, every trustee that's ever been on this board, that's been on Finance Committee, just absolutely starts, you know, shuddering when it comes August, when we've got to start talking budget, and how we're going to pay for our staff and for the improvements and stuff that we'd like to do to the village. Gloria, we always said, "Boy, that magic hat is going to have to be good this year," because, and all of a sudden, the rabbit came out and we were, and be able to control our taxes. It's just, it's just been amazing. I mean, in her time working here, you know, endlessly, she completed her four years at the UW Green Bay's Clerk and Treasurers Institute, and graduated from the Wisconsin Municipal Treasurers Institute in 2012, and Clerk's Completion Course in 2013. She also earned her Certified Municipal Treasurer of Wisconsin designation in 2013. And then she finally, a promise she said she made to her, I believe, her mother, that she graduated from the University of Green Bay with a Bachelor's of Applied Studies degree in May of 2017. I, you know, I mean, she's trained two other presidents ahead of me, and I probably was the, you know, the straw that broke the camel's back, because, I mean, she says, "I can't teach him anything, he just won't listen," you know, or whatever it is. But we are so appreciate, appreciate what you've done. We'd like to present you with a little going-away gift. As we talked about gifts to get her, you know, I mean, we said, "Well, we could get her a clock." And I says, "Well, she's retiring, and retired people don't have much need for a clock. You know, you're going to maybe look at it once in a while or whatever." But we did find something that retired people also like to do, is possibly maybe have a Now, this is a cooler, so that when Gloria looks at this, it says, "In recognition, 13 years of dedicated service to the Village of North Hudson." And we have this, that we know that she will get much more use out of, or occasional use out of, than we had. And we also have a little picture with a quote on it, and I don't know if they'll be able to see it, but it's, "I admire people who choose to shine after all the storms they've been through, Gloria Truster." And here, in appreciation, with your picture on it, to know that this one, for you, is a gift for you.
You guys know me well.
Well, it helps when we've got somebody on the inside, Nathan helped with, and it's your favorite, so. So we tried to do that, but no, we can never, ever, you know, thank you enough. I know different board members said, "No, you can't let her go." And I says, "Her choice, you know, I mean, that's the nice thing about America, we have free choice, and we hope you have a long and happy retirement."
Thank you, Stan.
How hard is that for you unless you run ahead?
No, that's fine.
No, we already talked about that one, we can get a permit.
Just quickly, I'd like to acknowledge how grateful and blessed I've been to work with such a phenomenal group of individuals, both past and present, and our residents have been wonderful. They come in, they are understanding if there's issues, they ask questions that I need to have answers, and I think we all work really well together. Like Stan said, the chief has been here through my duration, and I've always enjoyed his stability, and I can't thank you all enough for this. Thank you.
I just want to make a quick comment. I've been doing municipal law since 1985, and in the course of that timeframe, we've been involved representing probably, I don't know, 15 or 20 different municipalities. And as each of the other people in our office have gotten started in handling municipal work, I've always said that, well, two things. One, I said, "Just remember that this municipal work is 90% politics and 10% legal, and so keep that in mind when you're, when you're there, and think about all those things, it's the blend of the legal and the political." But the other thing I would tell them is that what's key is to have a good clerk and administrator to work with. And, you know, I've had the privilege of working probably, again, with 15 or 20 different clerks, administrators over those years, and the one thing that always impressed me about Gloria was that the tougher the issue was, the better she really performed. And I just want to congratulate her on her term here at the, at the village, and also thank her for really digging in on those issues that were really tough to handle. She really does a nice job, so.
Thank you.
Okay, on to, the next item on the agenda is request to use Chief Jansen Memorial Park outside of park hours, approval requested, and we have...
Stan, I want to make a motion?
Okay.
To approve the reservation of Chief Jansen Memorial Park by David Schmidt of 760 Summit Lane North. Date is 7/7/17, from 5:30 to midnight.
Second.
All right, thank you, Kathy. And David is here, and with his daughter and friends that want to, I guess, I don't know, you don't really need to ask permission, but we haven't had a vote yet, so you can convince us that this is, you know, we can, we should trust you out there at, you know, all hours of the evening.
Need to go up to the mic.
Who wants to go?
We don't bite.
Go three, go three at a time. Safety in numbers.
Hey, Brooke. Okay, then.
Name and address, first of all, that's what we make everybody do when they go up there.
Okay, Brooke Bilsonen at 12 Fieldstone Bay of Hudson, Wisconsin.
Okay.
Should we just all, can we all talk together?
Well, yeah, you can. I mean, it's fine. Just let us know what you, what the plan is. I mean, we've read it, but the audience and folks watching you on TV, you know you're on TV right now for the first time probably in your lives, but, unless you're gymnast or whatever and stuff, then we don't know, but...
Okay, so I'm Grace Schmidt, and I live at 760 Summit Lane North.
And I'm Anna Jensen, and I live at 1014 St. Christ Street.
Okay.
Okay.
Should I just say?
Sure. Okay, so we want to use the Chief Jansen Memorial Park for the post-July 4th party. It's like, it's, so we're going to have like, a movie night, it's kind of like a throwback party, and so it'll be like a drive-in movie theater, sort of.
Without cars.
Yeah, without the cars, because...
I was going to say, the chief might have issues if you guys drive.
And so we wanted to use it after hours because then, we wanted to see multiple movies, and since we were using a projector, we can't use it until it's somewhat dark out, and it's summer, so the sun goes down later.
Anything else you do, what do you want to add, or?
What movies are we watching?
We're thinking about watching like Grease in the Sandlot, and then The Breakfast Club is still being, like, discussed.
Good. I like that.
And, yeah, that's what we want to watch. I mean, we probably won't be able to get all the time in to watch all of them, but we're going to like try to fit in as much as we can, if we can.
Do you know the number of kids attending?
Um, well, at the very, very most, we'd say like, we want to do 50, but we might not actually have that many, because it depends on the people we actually like enough to invite.
There you go.
No, and you will have your parents, some of the parents will be there?
Yeah, I think Brooke's parents and my dad.
Maybe not both.
Brooke, maybe, I don't know.
No, that's very good.
I don't know about Anna.
Okay, if there's not, anything else you ought to add, you can be seated, and we'll, if there's no other questions by the board, we'll have a vote, all in favor of allowing movie night at Chief Jansen Memorial Park. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Have a fun evening, do not forget the bug spray.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Have a great, great evening, and have a great Independence Day weekend. Next on the agenda, temporary Class B slash Class B alcohol license, North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc. Days are August 17th to the 20th of 2017.
Stan, could I move to approve the temporary Class B malt beverage and Class B wine license for North Hudson Pepper Festival, INC., with the effective date of August 17th through August 20th, 2017, as recommended by the village clerk?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Kathy. Is there any comments, questions, or statements by the, Tim, would you like, you know, perfect time to put a plug in for the festival?
We added the 17th with the possibility of an activity in the 17th, but most generally it's going to be from the 18th to 20th, it's like the Friday night through the, through Sunday night, so. We brought the times back down to close at midnight, so that's going to be back to the normal, and we're closing at 10:30 on Sunday night, so we'll be out of there. We know school starts early this year, so school will definitely be in session, so that's a, taking effect for that, so.
That sounds good. Is that wonderful band that was here last year on Saturday, or did they break up?
No, they could not attend this year. I know, they were good, but no.
They were outstanding. I mean, that was, that was one of the best bands that are at the Pepper Festival, so that's disappointing. But it will be fun, and it will be different, as it always is, and we hope everybody will be available that weekend to attend the Pepper Festival, because it is the village celebration, and all the money's go back to charities, and...
You're correct, yeah.
And we're, we're looking forward to it. We've had, usually we get good weather, so that, is that, we'll, okay, so it's been, motion made and seconded.
Abstained from the vote.
Tim looks abstained from the vote, all in favor, signify saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, North Hudson Pepper Festival rolls again. Number eight, adoption of ordinance 03-2017, amending Chapter 90, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 90-12, Parking and Use of Recreational Vehicles, approval requested.
Stan, can I move the adoption of ordinance 03-2017?
Thank you. Ryan, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now, this is quite lengthy addition to this, so do I don't have to, we don't have to read all that stuff?
No, it was in the, it was in the package, and it's posted.
Okay.
People can look at it online if they want.
Yeah, yeah, so that one was kind of lengthy, but it is, it changes, there's been some questions about using mobile homes, or, you know, the parking, and, you know, as we get more of them, and yards get smaller or whatever, that, and then for, to, just to define, some folks might, you know, when they, people are traveling through the country during the summer and stuff, they might come in in a motor home, and, you know, it just gives some guidance on how long they could stay in the village or park or whatever, and at the residents or the family that they're, they're visiting. So if you want to look at it, it'll be in the code book, ordinance 03-2017. And is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, it's an ordinance, so I'll go with Kirk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, new business from the board or staff, the president's comments, I'm going to keep them short. First thing is, as the chief talked about, when we had the storm, we had power outages, and in different areas, and it's something you don't think about, is that, yeah, the lights are off, but you don't realize where some of the other electricity that is very important is also off. And one of the examples, I'll, you know, bring it up, and I'll be as delicate as I can, but we have lift stations that move our sewer and stuff downstream toward the plant in Hudson. Well, if the lift stations don't operate, if they don't have power, the pumps don't run, and if the pumps don't run, and we keep flushing upstream from that, it builds the lift station, and we get a, we have an issue with trying to clear those pump stations. And I wanted to thank our Public Works staff for the stellar job they did. They had two different times this weekend, or that weekend, that we had power outages, and, and they had contingency plans, they worked with their friends down in Hudson to have a generator brought up. We also had backup with a pump truck that we could lift out of there. But just a comment I would like to make is, please limit, you know, let's see, a friend of mine said, "Don't rush to flush if you have, you know, if we're having a power outage where you could have an issue at the lift stations, you know, downstream from your house, because, you know, the backup, we're not going to go there." So, and that's, the other thing is, these disposable wipes, again, I please, I ask people to please pay attention, the disposable wipes do flush, but they do not play well with the pumps down in the lift stations, so, and that can be quite expensive for us, and, you know, we, as, we're trying to be good stewards of our tax dollars, you know, fixing pumps that are broken, because those things going downstream is, is an issue. And then lastly, for me, I hope everyone has a safe, happy, and a considerate Independence Day. And considerate, I mean, we love fire, everybody loves fireworks, but not everybody loves, they start getting old at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning sometimes, you know, so if you please pay attention to that, if you're going to use fireworks, yeah, please be considerate. Next is administrator's comments. Gloria, you got anything left in you?
I do not. I know how well you like short meetings.
Well, no, it's all to get business done, you know, you know, get, if you have comments, we more than welcome them, because we won't be able to enjoy them after this is your last meeting.
I had to just...
Okay, Melissa.
I just wanted to say congratulations to Gloria again, and then thank her for all of her support over the past four-plus years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Plan Commission Recommendations, Chair update, the chair is not here, so Kevin, you want to step up to the podium, please, and give us an update? The only thing there is Artisan North subdivision.
All right. So, so basically, at the Plan Commission, we reviewed...
So, so basically, at the plant commission, we reviewed the final plat. If you remember at the last village board meeting, the board approved the developers' agreement and the preliminary plat. So from there, then we, they went ahead and executed the final plat, which is in front of you. I did have some comments that I did draft up, and since then, the surveyor has addressed all five of them. So the one that you have in front is the, the final version. So, you know, we're recommending approval of that tonight. One other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, there was a monument placement waiver request. So basically, they've set the exterior irons. The only thing that they're looking for is a waiver to set the interior ones, just because of the, you know, the construction with the roads and the utilities that need to be, that need to take place, so there's a agreement in here that they would do that within one year from the time that the plat is recorded, so. So plant commission did recommend approval, so it needs to come in front of the village board for final ratification, so.
Okay.
Yeah, any questions?
Did you add this monument thing to your overall plan? That you're watching diligently for?
Yes, yep, it is in our comments, so, yes, yeah. So they will be, yes, taken care of.
Anybody else?
You're keeping an eye on the developers' overall plan and how it's fitting, and.
Yeah, so as.
Everything's on time so far?
Everything's on time, you know, I know they're trying to get their permits in place so they can look at starting the construction. We will have a pre-construction meeting with all the people that are involved.
Okay.
We will have a constructor-inspector on behalf of the village.
It's going well?
Down there.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That's it for me.
Yeah, anybody else?
Are we still getting money for the parks, for that upgrade?
Yeah, so there, in the developers' agreement, there was a fee of eight thousand dollars that was allocated.
And then is that going to all parks, or a specific park?
It's going to be in a general fund, so it, yeah, should be able to use wherever needed within the community, so.
Thank you.
I guess everybody knows what, I guess everybody knows what committee you're leading, isn't it?
Yes, it goes to a park.
Going to unallocated.
No.
Sorry.
Touch my money.
Very, thank you.
Okay, the part, part B of that is the Artisan North subdivision, final plat approval requested. Would somebody like to make the motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there anything in there we need to read? I mean.
There's an awful lot actually to read, but.
Well, it's just the waiver request, but, you know, final plat, you know, had been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor of the, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, personal and finance committee recommendations, claims, approval requested.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Is there a motion to pair bills?
I move to recommend board approval of the June twenty seventeen second non-recurring claims of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and twenty-two cents.
Thank you Kathy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kirk, is there any discussion or questions of the claims? Hearing none, and it's a finance issue, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Nicholas. And next item is bank loan bid selection for the purchase of municipal garage. Is there a motion?
This is the loan bid?
Correct.
Stan, I move to accept the loan bid from First American Bank in an amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand with a two-point-five-three-five percent fixed rate over a ten-year repayment schedule with semi-annual payments beginning in twenty eighteen and no prepayment penalties. Additionally, authorize the village president and administrator to sign loan agreements and secure funding.
And I'll second, I'll second that.
Thank you, Tim. And just as part of the discussion, we had five different, or banks that, or, or credit, anti-credit union that were, and then we went through the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands, the five-three-five was the lowest, next was two-seven-four, then two-eight-five, then we had two of them at three-point-five-oh. So again, it's a bless you that we had lowest bidder, and First American's been good before when we've used them, so. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Kirk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, public works committee recommendations.
Same, public works committee did meet, but it ended up being, we had nothing to move forward to the board.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, our chair is not here, chief, is, was there any?
Public safety did not meet.
Oh, you did not meet? Okay, thank you. Public welfare, Kirk, any updates?
Nope.
Okay, did not meet type of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and your other hat now?
Truck word. Nope, we meet in a couple of days.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is convening to close session, we have a couple items. A, if the board may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen-point-eight-five-one, par and E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties and the investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to an offer or offers on the property at seven-twelve Pine. Is there a motion to go into closed session on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kathy. Okay, and the next item, the board may convene in closed session pursuant to statute nineteen dot eight-five-one-E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties or investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to water and sewer ad hoc committee updates and possible, possibly combining all water and sewer system components with the city of Hudson. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. We are now, we got a vote?
You need to have a roll call.
Roll call vote, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are now closed, in closed session, so George, thank you again for joining us, we're going to have a little picnic later. Okay, the, we're back in open session, the board meeting at eight forty-six, and there's no actionable, report. We've got too many papers in closed session. I'll get it. There we go. For the closed session item of the water and sewer system, it was, it was, we were, we got a report from the ad hoc committee, and they're to continue in pursuant of the, an agreement possibly with Hudson on the water and sewer system combining. And as far as actually, item A from the seven-twelve Pine Street North, we've had several offers on the property, and we would have a recommendation or a motion to accept a bid on the property?
I move to accept the bid from Corey Levers in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for the seven-twelve Pine Street North lot.
Thank you Kathy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion, we went through that pretty good, so since it's a spending and/or, and actually, I mean, the money issue?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And the last item is adjournment, so we are adjourned at eight forty-eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.